As we can do it with the audio. Inserting in just a moment. Okay. What's your starting of that? Good evening. We'll call this meeting to order at six oh one P M. Roll call. Bernard here, Zansky here. Burns.
Absence of excuse.
Uh, Offerman here. Kager.
Yes.
Moore. Here. Close here. Okay. Seating of alternates if needed. Um, I would like to, uh, question that we see to Mr. Moore. Yes, uh, be all. Also, I think that's. All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. It's your word. All rise for the. Plaid allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic. It stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, that with you. Do we get a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Two carries. A quick note, Miss Kager provided. That's what you're hoping to be. Trying to use it myself, but.
Me too.
Certainly hopefully that keep us on correct. Great, moving on to approval of the May sixth, two thousand twenty five Z B A meeting minutes.
I thought suppose. Oh, corrections, amendments, um, on page two of minutes. Under two. Um, there was a misspelled. On the one, two, three, fourth line should be twenty nineteen and twenty twenty four. Uh, going down still in number two, the last part. A roll call vote was taken and Scott Zansky and Kay instead of Kager, so that needs to be corrected. Okay, and at the bottom of three, um, after Mr. Offerman spoke, um, I noted that, um, the twenty, the two thousand seven planning commission that mentioned Kager as a board member referred to Richard Kager, her late husband. So that needs to be added there. And on page three. Uh, he. Um, there was no expiration date on the site plan dated two thousand and seven. Everything else under E should be omitted. Um, I distinctly remember being handed a statement that of position, but it's not on a recording. So it happened either before the meeting or after the meeting. So, and then the other part of that was when I just mentioned about.
Did you, did you, what, what did you state about the E tomorrow?
I said, all that should be part of E is that one sentence. There was no expiration date on the site plan dated two thousand and seven. The rest of it was observation. From this, this is down to the end of. Now, as far as I know, that is it. After having read it and read it and read.
I would like to talk about in, uh, section three, page two of six, Ed Maskey. Sir, yes. Ed Maskey, uh, had quite a bit of information he shared. There's nothing stating that, uh, he's, he passed on documents from the township lawyer for the planning commission, his opinion of how different information or what they could do with the special land, uh, his permit. There's no mention of that. Um, I think that's a very pertinent, uh, information.
I believe all, I'm sorry.
That should be, that should be added to this, if not added to it, at least it's on current recording tonight and it's being talked about.
I believe what all of the handouts that Ed had that night are part of the documents that I gave to, um, or the office.
Yeah, those were submitted for public. Point we want to know that.
I think it should be submitted because it talks about the submitted letters with the other individuals that read letters that like, and it'll talk about who documentation that he has on the township. That give discretion, um, to the planning commission.
Then what would you suggest we add?
Um, I would say that he, um, in your wording, because it would be much more elegant to find. I would say, you know, you know, Ed Maskey provided documentation from the mountain township lawyer, um, giving the planning commission discretion prior to the land use permit meeting.
Well, documents from Lincoln Township attorney giving the P C D.
His opinion on direction for the, uh. For the planning commission. Sure.
He's saying to.
S L U P, it's like a special language for me. He provided information, he provided. Also on page three of six, um, just a discussion. Um, the lawyer, um, in A, um, they talked about Robert Nair's, her, her reasonable appearance of conflict interest. She also talked about and stated that he can every one of the conflicts of interest goes right that night with the exception of one being left off. The one being left off was the parents of conflict. She stated that it's in, it's in the recording, um, and thought that might be pertinent information, but at least we can.
And there's some points out, I mean, I can swear to. I'll make a note.
There was one left off, she stated. Thank you, that's, that's all I see.
Her safe position was submitted to reference. She must be out. Any other discussion? So we had, um, the motion made by Hager. As amended. I will second that. Supported by Offerman. We've got some discussion, so a roll call vote, uh, Zansky. Uh, signify by saying aye if you approve the minutes as amended. Aye. Hager.
Aye.
Offer.
Aye.
More. Amben. Right, and Carrie.
Can I just wait one second, Matt?
Yeah.
One, two minutes on the next.
Um.
On page five.
Yeah.
It's not working.
She stated.
Audio is working, so.
Had a reasonable appearance.
I see a note that says call Isaiah to take that where appears your statement.
I just, I didn't see that before. I'll link that to your description. I don't know why that's not working.
All right. Do you want me to put that in?
I think that's hard. But, uh, to you, to this board.
Page three says that, yeah.
Yeah, yes, she got, um, she didn't, he didn't talk about, she talked about it the first time she come up, she went exactly like it was nasty. Everything was red, blue, and black, and it's translated back to it. But one was left off.
And that he had a reasonable, yeah.
Yes, yes.
But that's here.
Yeah.
I'm both, I'm both.
Yeah, and you know what? You don't have.
I don't want any.
It's up to.
We've already approved them, do we need them?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, hearing. Um. All right, the Milton Township policy for public comments. Um, so we both enter our public comments period. That would be general comments as we move into our special hearing regarding the, um, dimensional variance. There's public comment for that that's also given for an opportunity. Um, as far as the policy for public comments goes, we do have it posted. The, the basics are you have up to three minutes to speak. Um, we'll kindly. Oh, yeah, if it's time's up. Um, you may speak only once during public comment. Um, and please direct comments towards the Z B A and not each other if things get heated, you know, so. Um, would anybody like to make public comment?
Um, there's some letters, should I read the letter when there's a letter?
I think the letter would go under the.
On the hearing, okay.
So closing to public comment.
They're closing.
All right, old business, there is none, new business, there is none. So moving on to the notice public here. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing and move, I'm special meeting and move to the public hearing. Any discussion? Great, roll call, Zansky.
Aye.
Hager.
Aye.
Offerman.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ambenard, aye, two carries. Public hearing commences at six, is that fourteen?
Six fourteen.
Six fourteen P M. All right, our public hearing is to consider a dimensional requirement variance for parcel zero one seven dash zero three two dash zero 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 dash one zero 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 dash zero zero at one five zero two eight Old Irish Road, Millington, Michigan. Uh, let the record reflect that we have already seated alternate more. And now public comment regarding the dimensional required. Is there anybody that would like to speak?
I would.
Sure, come on board, please state your name, um, and then.
Okay.
Well, you please, sure, thank you, sir.
My name's Janet Diamond first. And I would like to know who owns the property. At one five oh.
Very public.
Great.
Very, very public comment, we don't necessarily have to answer questions. Not to cycle anything. We do have the, the record for this variance request. And please restart her.
Okay, yeah.
Correct it, so. Start over.
This will probably be erased also, why did someone other than the owner request a variance?
I don't have an answer for that at the moment, so let's keep going and you're we, this is part of our discussion, yes.
And when the, uh, septic tank was put in, uh, July of two thousand twelve by Matthew McGraw, he stated to the health department that it was one acre, actually it was point five three acres. And they also stated at the time, the health department, that it's heavy soil, high water table. And with the sketch of the site, it did not give the, um, all the correct information on that. That would have been very helpful if we would have been given that maybe when we send out the letters, if that's possible or not. And the property was either surveyed today, not by myself, but by someone else, I didn't request it. And, um, currently this, the, where the stakes are, there's a fence of that either Bob Whitehead put in or Carolyn and Matthew McGraw put in that's on my property. Also, one that's been stacked partially is on my property. He hadn't bothered me in past. No problem with it. And my concern is, um, runoff of water. It's a very tight space. And with the water table as high as it is in that area and the soil, the type it is, I know my basement at the farmhouse, I just did a, a check and signed the new lease for them. Went into the basement and there's water marks all on to where he has to run a dehumidifier currently without any movement of land during variance. And another question, I don't know if this is right to ask or not, but why didn't the buyer check the parcel size when he purchased it? Knowing it was, uh, did he expect, uh, a variance to get on this at that time, knowingly, will this? I certainly would sign a contract for buying something, I would want to know when I buy.
A more question for you.
Yes.
Is your property to the north or south of the one question?
My property is, uh, somebody in some acres and it's to the north and north and east. I wrote a little note telling that I see that, um, I have been right at the parish town. A joints.
And that we. Thank you.
It's our hearing.
You need to walk.
Other public, yes.
You can walk and stay if you want.
I like, I'm, I'm, I like to clear a little few things up with her. So, I'm, I'm Bob and my dad are brothers. So, uh, Matt and Carolyn lived there in a house years ago, the trailer. And Matt's back here, my cousin. And, uh, I purchased it, Matt sold it on a land contract to a guy a couple of years ago. And this kid both are deceased now. Um, they were in there, they gave him two grand out, wouldn't pay it off, would pay it, so I went in, took it back, cleaned it all up, put windows in it, remodeled it. Let my daughter live there for two years. Um, they got married and then I gifted it to them. So it's in their name now, my daughter's name.
The trailer property.
All of it.
Please direct.
I'm saying, I just want to, I'm not trying to be, just, stay here another second, then, somebody's trying to explain it to her.
Somebody needs to get very good.
You're fine, one of them. Um, and they were, uh, they fixed it, they've been fixing it up and, uh, they were squatting up, um, you know, since we, they've had it before, I know a lot, you know, things were, you know, dirty around there, they cleaned it up, the kids did a nice job cleaning it up and stuff, so. And I just advised them to, I said, just do a, uh, uh, do a land, uh, not appraisal, but a survey, which they were behind and they just got it done yesterday or today, you know, finished it, so. So we know where the landmarks are and everything, you know what I mean, so. I think they, from what we always thought, Matt always thought that said it, their property went off the back of that last barn and maybe it's a foot and a half this back to the west from that spot. And, uh, I'm not sure on the fence I picked up, but and then the neighbor, other neighbor onto the, uh, south. It looks like it went over a little bit that way, a little bit in survey, you know what I mean? So it's, you know, but we never, it's had no tensions, we were just finding it better for themselves, kids are, just got married a year ago. And, uh, they're just wanting to, that thing's been there since the seventies, we put, put thousands of dollars into it. It's, you know, it's rotten away, you know what I mean? It's ice over, so they just want to put a new, uh, house there, new, nice new modular, the garage, you know? So nothing huge, nothing. As far as the runoff goes, I consider, I don't know, it seems to me like it's on a hill, but I'm not, you know, it's pretty high up, you guys see it in that property. Um, but, and the septic was, the septic in the field was put in in two thousand twelve, I'm not sure the size, the variance, we can change that, we have some room, if we have to change the septic, we would, we will. Um, I'm saying, uh, but we're curious that the septic is still on that property that we own, that off property, so septic is on the property.
Okay.
Um. We can say.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Any others?
Yeah. You know, it's true.
Is it an accessibility, if you mean to say again?
No, I'm the neighbor, live right next to it, pretty.
Are you on your side or the south side?
Thank you, I live to the south.
Thank you, sir.
I live on the corner.
What's your, what's your name?
James Trup.
Okay, gee, thanks.
T R U P T U N. See, the only thing bothers you they sold that property three or four different times. And I'm curious who, who owned it? Because every time we turn around, there's somebody else there. And then when McGraw had that septic tank in there, I asked him why he had no one in there. And he said, well, what they are gonna do this and that, and I said, but you just had a septic tank, it had twelve hundred gallon septic tank with a thousand feet drainage. It's been in there when I was in there, nineteen sixty seven. So I had a new one put in. And I said to myself, now, why, why do you want to do that? And every time you turn around, there's somebody else owning the property. And really, and, and the thing of it is borderline, you, you can't keep it straight because every time you turn around, someone else has it. Read survey. And I'm, I tried to tell them before where the survey was, there were states there, you know, if they got pulled up, I don't know. And because of things if you, you're pretty big, so, you know, I know other people that had a module put in in the township only had to put a four twelve foot on, on the, the module. And that was just recently. And, uh, it was Smith that has on his property. And now all of a sudden here, I don't know what the, what they seem to be doing, the way the problem is. Because the whole thing bothers you. How long? And what are they, what are they gonna put in there, are they building or are they bringing the module? Yes. And like I say, I mean, once my business rates and somebody's gonna make up their mind what they're doing. Because their friends, like they say, three or four different people had their doings for that trailer. Young, her and I know. That's about all I can say about it.
And you said there's a septic system, you said there was a septic system in there from nineteen sixty seven all the way to two thousand twelve?
Yes. Yep. What they done is they broke it.
If we think that we need to accept it into record? So if you would like to. Sorry. Thank you.
They can take it, they just have to keep, you don't get that.
You go, yeah, we just, we must.
I don't.
Thank you for helping clarify.
Mine was nineteen sixty eight, my septic, I live there. I was the original.
Same. So. What is to? Eight, right there.
Eleven.
No bad. Um, you're passive this way in the next. Back through if you would.
All right. Hi. Great. My name is Rhonda McGraw. I was the previous owner of the company. Um, my husband and I lived there from about ninety seven to about two thousand fifteen. Um, we had the new subject done, so I guess there's some questions with that, I don't know what I can really answer, but it was in July of two thousand twelve, I think. Um, it, our previous septic was failing, it was an old barrel in the ground. It was not great and it was backing up into the fields behind our house that, you know. Um, so we did have that replaced, we did go bigger because we had planned on putting a modular on there at some point. That didn't turn out and we wanted pleading, but, um, so that's why we put the new subject in. The paperwork and the drawing that they did and the acre on the paper, the township did all that when they came out, did the survey of it. So we didn't, that we had an acre, we, they just came out, did a survey during the picture, told us where we could put it. So that's where something goes, but it is all on the property that's owned by the fifteen oh two eight.
Okay, okay, thank you. Other public comment?
Lori Hunt, do I need to get the address or?
Um, you know, stay here, it's friends, I can.
Um, did you put it on the sign up sheet?
The sign.
Okay, we'll make it later. Thank you.
I'm just, you know, kind of getting all the, the goings on about whatever. My confusion is, is someone has a current trailer on piece property. And they want to better their lives and their property value by putting a modular, not a manufacturer. There's obviously confusion on what that means. And I know you guys understand the difference between modular and manufacturer. Modular means you are building a house. Just happens to be built in a factory and it's put together on the land, I know, because I just did it last year. It's a stick build house. It's not a manufactured house. So therefore it's going to improve the land, it's going to improve the value of that property. It's going to improve everybody's value. So why somebody would be. So why somebody would be opposed to wanting the surrounding values and properties improved? Confuses me, but they may have ulterior motives, I don't. But all I know is, you've got two young kids, less than two years old, or two years married, that want to better their lives. And put down their roots for their kids and their grandkids. I think they deserve that, right? As the old saying goes, it's the American dream, we all deserve it.
It's only the minister who will present it, so that'll be coming up here. Any other public comments?
Then there was an attorney's, uh, whatever. Um, to those concerned, I recently met with my client Janet Burris. Regarding the meeting being held on June eleventh regarding dimensional requirement variance. For parcel zero one seven, zero three two, zero zero zero. One zero zero zero, zero zero. Commonly known as one five zero two eight, Old Irish Road, Millington, Michigan, four eight seven four six. My client is concerned about the effects building any new structure may have on her property. Specifically, my client is concerned about water runoff retention and disturbance to the water table. Based on the findings of the Tuscula County Health Department, on or about July eleventh, two thousand and twelve. When a new septic field was installed. There was concern, concern at that time of the long-term integrity of the system based on the high water table. Pursuant to Article nineteen, section nineteen, point oh three dash nineteen point oh four. Of the Millington Township zoning ordinance. The zoning appeals board shall consider the following. When an appeal is made to them regarding non-use performance issues. One, the ordinance restrictions unreasonably prevent the owner. From using the property for permitted purpose, or will render conformity with such restrictions. Unnecessarily burdensome. Second, a granting of the variance will do substantial justice to the applicant. As well as to other property owners in the district, and a lesser variance. Will not give substantial relief to the applicant, as well as to be more consistent with justice to other property owners. In the zoning district. Third, the plight of the applicant is due to the unique circumstances of the property. Fourth, the alleged practical difficulty does not self-create. The issue being presented to the board is a clear combination of elements three and four. In that the applicant was, or should reasonably have been aware. Of the unique and non-conforming nature of the property when it was acquired. Moreover, the ordinance is not unreasonable in nature. Rather, it is reasonably preventing construction on lots that are not large enough to support such construction. Furthermore, no known evidence has been produced regarding a site plan, directional water plan. Modification to septic field, et cetera. Although municipalities and the state of Michigan are encouraged. To be sympathetic to property owners' use and enjoyment of property. Such is only true when issues are not self-created, nor disturbing. Nor creating a disturbance of the use and enjoyment of neighboring land owners. The Michigan Court of Appeals found in Risco versus Grand Haven Zoning Board. Seven seventy three Northwest, second, seven thirty, two eighty four, Michigan. Four five three, that in instances when an alternative design exists. A variance as a matter of convenience is not appropriate. At this time, my client, who will most directly, who will be most directly impacted by a possible variance. Is not agreeable on allowance of a variance. Sincerely, Gregory S. Truck, and signed by Janet Burris.
That will close public comments. Moving on to, um, presentation by petitioner or designated. It's a property owner.
Am I able to, I can, Cassie's up, the record, Cassie's up to you guys?
We just have to make sure that agreement retained. Thank you.
Well, my name is Delana LaFoy, this is my husband, Jamie LaFoy. I've lived in Millington my whole life throughout, went to school here, graduated, it's a community I love being a part of, a great place. Um, we actually are looking forward to putting our roots down here, you know, like my mom and dad did, and starting a family. Um, my parents, they lived close down the road, so it's kind of a good thing, you know. I raised in a family, being close to mom and dad and everything, so, um, very excited to start our prospect on building and. Um, the property is continuing, continuing our, our legacy, so this property was my, my grandpa's brother's, um, so there's like four generations that have lived here. Um, there hasn't been some, some changes and stuff like that, like my dad said, he bought people who were renting at the time and. And, uh, he was gonna purchase it to rent, and then we kind of stayed there after we got married, because weddings are expensive, so it was, it was helpful and it was budget friendly, but. We kind of were living in it, and we're like, no, I don't think we can do that, but, you know, we're kind of interested in the property and. We're gonna purchase a home and ended up being a wedding gift for my dad, which was super thankful, so. Um, we've lived there for about four years now, but on five years, um, we've had comments from the neighbors as soon as we moved in, like. Thank you so much, the grass looks good, like we mowed it, cleared some things out, made everything look nice. Um, so we're excited about the possibility of building our property to the legacy of our family, and then, uh, however, the existing failure, it's no really. Viable for investment, to put money in, like I said, so, um, we believe that building a new home on this property is gonna obviously increase the value. Um, but also bring more taxable value to the community and widen the community, meaning that we're gonna have kids and son in Millington, so. Um, we love it here, and like I said, we continue to make many memories in this town and we continue it, um. I did attach in there, there is the, um, inspection for the, uh, septic field. Um, I did put on there, it is, um, two for three bedroom, two bathroom house, um. So there's that, and then I did put on the back, it's kind of like our layout plan of our house, we're doing the modular. Um, the bedroom, bathroom house, it's kind of, they, things nice, a little more, and, yeah.
Thank you, I have a question.
Absolutely.
Uh, so, obviously, this is a picture of what you plan to build, and this is a picture of what's there.
Currently there, yeah, so that's.
And I see a lot of measurements and pictures of measurements?
So that's the.
Just had a survey. Do you know how far the existing mobile home is off the property line right now?
So currently, I measured it, was it, I'm ballparking, because I know we're, we've been measuring all like exactly where everything's gonna be. I'm gonna say roughly about twenty eight feet, give or take.
And the existing garage, you know how far that is?
The existing garage right now, um, and mind you, that's gonna be completely, we're gonna, we're planning on wiping the house clean, like the whole property.
Sure.
And starting fresh, because the foundation in the garage, like you have to stubble for it, it's not really ideal, so. We got the property line, this, um, survey done, so that way, when everything's done, we're going to center it, it's gonna be fresh, clean, good. Currently, I can't tell you ideally, I want to say it's about ten to twelve feet off the ground.
So, so, oh, and when you, when you put your new home out, you create, you know, polish the garage as well?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna take the garage off, the, the concrete's all busted, so it's gonna be, uh, we're gonna start with the house first and then.
So is that size of house being here, twenty by fifty six?
Uh, that's a little bit size dimension, it should be twenty six by, uh. Think they were counting for that, on that, too, and the roof pitch, I do, um, we did upgrade that in our package with our house, and we do have a five twelve roof pitch.
I mean, I, I guess I can look at you, what, what's the size?
Uh, our size of our property is five three eight.
Five three?
Yeah.
You know, you measure this?
Uh, we are one ten wide by two ten width. Or I'm sorry, two twenty.
I'm only asking about the, the offset on property lines, because it looks like from this picture, I mean, they're probably. If they demolish it and center it, the people that are upset about this new structure being too close. They're probably gonna be better off, because it's.
Can we make deliberation?
Yeah, 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 I'm just, that's why I'm curious about the, the property line offsets here, just. So you, so your proposal fifty, twenty six by fifty six, is that, is that with the geometry?
That's what you're, so the garage, that, that's just the house, and then I have, then the proposal that I sent over. Was a twenty four by twenty four six garage, yeah, so, complete width, I am, because I know, um. The complete width with my house and my garage, I'm eighty feet wide.
Eighty two or five?
Yeah, total, connecting the house to the garage, and leaves up.
Any other questions?
Getting a septic system, uh, upgraded with the new size of house?
We currently plan on using the, the existing septic field.
Okay, uh, presentation by voting administrator.
So just to, before I start on my actual report, I just want to clarify a few things, so the township does not govern the septic. Field or the subject tank, that's all done by the county health department. The township also does not govern the actual site plan. We get a stat that's required for the zoning, but we do not govern the actual build that's done through Tuscula County State built. So neither of those things are under the purview of the township. Um, the property owner parcel zero one seven, zero three two, zero zero zero, one hundred, zero zero. Located within the agricultural residential zoning district has submitted a request for a dimensional variant, submit the construction of a new single-family residence with an attached garage. The parcel currently contains a mobile home installed around nineteen seventy four in a stick-built garage. The owner proposed to remove both existing structures and construct a new home on the lot. The parcel is considered non-conforming under the current AR zoning standards as outlined in Article twelve point oh two. Of the Millington Township zoning ordinance. The lot area is zero point five three acres, and the minimum required by ordinance to build is one acre. The lot width is one hundred and ten feet, and the minimum required by ordinance is one hundred and fifty feet. The side yard setbacks are fifteen feet as proposed, and the minimum required by our zoning ordinance is twenty feet. Those are the three reasons for the variance today. The applicant is seeking a variance to allow development on this lot despite these dimensional deficiencies. As zoning administrator, I recommend supporting the variance request for the lot area and the lot width. Section fifteen point oh two, non-conforming lots of record. Allows legally recorded lots that predate the ordinance to be developed, even if they do not meet current area or width requirements. Provided that the width, the depth, and the area not less than fifty percent of their required by the ordinance. This lot meets those requirements, again, that's section fifteen point oh two. This parcel was established and developed prior to the adoption of the current zoning ordinance, as it remained under individual ownership. A mobile home has occupied the parcel since nineteen seventy four. Redevelopment will replace aging structures with a modern code compliant residence and attached garage. Enhancing the visual appeal and function of the property in keeping with the surrounding residential character. Section nineteen point oh four provides your review considerations. Letter A, practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship. The strict enforcement of the AR dimensional standards would impose an unnecessary hardship by denying redevelopment of illegally created and long-developed parcels. The existing conditions are not the result of the actions of the current property owner. Letter B, substantial justice and consistency within the area. Approval of this variance would be consistent with the treatment of similar pre-existing lots in the township. And would allow the property owner to reinvest in the site consistent with surrounding residential uses. Letter C, unique circumstances or physical conditions. The parcel's dimensions reflect its historical status as a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Its longstanding development status and small size are not shared by other conforming AR parcels, warranting individualized consideration. Letter D, public health, safety, and welfare. The proposed residence will meet all applicable health, safety, and building requirements. The site has existing road access and utility service, and the redevelopment will not negatively impact the public welfare. In conclusion, I recommend the approval of the variance for the lot area and the lot width with regards to this parcel. The side yard setback variance request should be evaluated by the zoning board of appeals based on the proposed site plan and applicable conditions. For which you have already been pre-bender.
Upon requesting a building permit, this, the renewed accounting permit. What happens with the septic, is at that point, does the county ensure that that septic is appropriate besides?
That is all within the county's purview, so yes, they would evaluate all of that before issuing the permit.
Um, what about running, because we've heard some concern about that, did you look at the slopes of property?
Yeah, I don't have that experience, I don't work for the county, so I can't guarantee that. I can't answer that question with any certainty.
Which I pose over.
But I mean, I know that, like, they, they would have to have a building inspections on, I know that, like, they have, I, I mean, I think some of you on our ZBIA. Just recently had homes built, you probably know those processes better than we do.
Run short, I put on each side of their home, their proposal.
Um, so, they're, they're requesting a fifteen foot setback, and our ordinance requires twenty, so yes. So for the home that they're currently looking at, they would be five feet short on each side, yes, that's right. I think this is a three-part variance, so it's the, the total lot area, it's the, uh, road frontage. And then it's the side yard setbacks, uh, my recommendation is that the board can look at each of those individually.
I have a question for you, Sammy.
Sure.
I know that you're required to go to the planning commission meetings, and the township board meetings. Are you gonna come to every ZBIA meeting and suggest of what we do?
Um, as a zoning administrator, anytime I bring you a variance request, I'm supposed to make a recommendation, is that the question?
Yeah, I don't think you did that at the, our last meeting, or did you do that at the last meeting?
At the last variance meeting, I did.
Okay, I just, is that part of your job to?
Yeah.
To go to the ZBIA meetings?
Um, well, it, it would depend on the content of yours, you have, you have ZBIA meetings for a multitude of reasons. Um, well, it, it would depend on the content of yours, you have, you have Z B A meetings for a multitude of reasons. So it would depend on the reason, um, but as, if you look at the ordinance under, I think it's section three point oh one. It kind of describes the role of your zoning administrator and your zoning administrator is supposed to make recommendations of these things.
Okay, I appreciate it, you're not, you're not under fire, I'm just, I'm seriously furious.
Yep.
So any other questions?
Alright, you're on.
Moving on to Z B A discussion and action.
Well, we just had one very similar to this. I mean, it wasn't a planted subdivision, which was slightly different, but it's very similar.
Um, yes, we do.
I think we should approve this. And I, if I was the neighboring landowner and I had to look across the street every morning. When I was drinking my coffee, I gotta imagine, I'd wanna see the top picture, not the bottom picture.
Now in, in front of me.
Or to the side.
It's been occupied since sixty seven, that's a.
Public, public damage is diluted.
I mean, I looked at the S E V, I think it's, the taxable S E V is thirty thousand, which. The assessor's doing her job there, because that trailer's not worth, worth much, but once this is built, I mean, their S E V is gonna be in the. Probably the one twenties, one forties, so the taxable value is gonna go way up. I mean, it's gonna improve the neighborhood, I think we should approve it, I think it's an easy decision.
I think we need to review. Our process. From under nineteen point oh two, starts off with the application, and the. Yes, it was created. Under nineteen oh three, you do have the authority to grant non-use variances. Under nineteen oh four. The applicant must present evidence show the zoning ordinance supplying strictly practical difficulty to result the applicant. And, uh, which these were all done very well in this Denver's report. Um, A, the ordinance restrictions unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a particular dis. Or render conform, conformity with such restrictions unnecessarily burdened some. B, granting the variance will do substantial justice to the applicant as well as to other property owners in the district. And a lesser variance will not give substantial relief to the applicant. As well as be more consistent with justice to other property owners in the district. C, play of the applicant is due to the unique circumstances of the property. D, the alleged practical difficulty is not self-created. I think they meant to have the word bend in there, but. The alleged practical difficulty is not that self-created. Our decision process, um, those are listed. Go through those individually, they're on page fifty seven in the. So looking at you of those. Does the ordinance restrict them from using the property for the committed purpose? Currently, they can't build about a point five three acre lot. I would say it does, it's true, I, my thoughts.
But it allows if it's more than fifty percent of the requirement, which it is. Requirement is a full acre, and it's point five three, barely more, but not.
Which they have the acreage size as well as the. Frontage which require one, one fifty, this is one ten, so they're forty feet short. So. Yes, the ordinance would prohibit them. From using it, um.
The strict application of the ordinance, correct.
Thank.
Section fifteen point oh two for non-conforming lots allows for them to.
Part of that fifteen oh two also states as long as reasonable living standards can be provided, which they obviously can be.
So, there it's a lot area and lot width, the setbacks though. They're proposing fifteen feet instead of the minimum required twenty feet that's required within the zoning district. The question would be, is that practical difficulty that's self-created? Purchase property that was an instance, property that was self-created. But with the houses, for their own, such.
Yeah, but you, you gotta look at the existing structures though, for, I mean, just going off this picture, I know we don't have like a good aerial. With exact measurements off the property lines, but just going off this front picture, the way it's centered. This garage is probably. One, one of these structures is, is too close to the property line already, of current ordinances. And you gotta remember, this lot was not subdivided, you know, five years ago or in twenty twelve, this was done way before the ordinance. And said we had to have at least an acre, so this was already existing, it was already here, it sounds like these people bought a vacant lot, that was a half acre and want to build a house on it, that's not what they're doing. This is already existing.
But it won't be anymore, and they're making a choice. To do that, to make that change, and I did drive by the property, um, and evaluated it, and it's tight. My whole area is very tight, the, the aerial view that we're provided certainly chose that. On page fourteen. The variance is being requested. Because they want to develop. As I go under fifteen point oh three, non-conforming structures. Page forty nine of the order, ordinance. Or lawful structure, so non-conforming is where lawful structure exists at the effective date of the admission of this ordinance, that could not be built under. Of this ordinance, I think we found another wordsmith issue in there. Such structure may be continued so long as it remains otherwise lawful, subject to following provisions. No such non-conforming structure may be enlarged or altered in any way which increases its non-conformity. Which they're not asking to enlarge the current structure, we're looking at clearing the land. Here that be damaged by fires, going tornado, or we're not there, should it be moved for any reason, we're not there either. Robert, do you have any thoughts?
No, I, well, my, my one thought is. I don't think five feet on each side is a big difference. I understand percentage, um. One fourth. So they're losing one fourth on each side, what property, so that would be five feet. Rather than twenty. Maybe I confused the percentage, I don't know. It's five feet on each side, it's, it's not a lot.
I agree, it's not a lot. I'm ready to make a motion, Robert.
Make one, Mr. Dinsky.
What's that? I would like to make a motion to approve the variance as requested. As follows, one, to reduce the lot width from one hundred and fifty feet to one hundred and ten feet. Number two, to reduce the acreage requirement from one acre to zero point five three acres. And number three, to reduce the side lot setback from twenty feet to fifteen feet. Do I have a second?
You must have, yes. You must have that all written down, because you talked too best for me.
So we have a motion by Kazansky and supported by Moore, any discussion?
I think it's the right thing to do.
I do too. No, we're still under, under discussion, um, and personally challenged by it because of the width of the house, the lot width, uh acreage. Um, that wasn't self-created, the width of the house, that could be changed, it's a different floor plan. So that's my. Concern about it, because somebody came in asking for just a variance of that nature, which we have had in the past. It has been denied. Because somebody wanted to reduce their side yard setback for a new structure. Um, but that's my discussion on it, any others?
Well, with this subject that you're talking about, be. The same kind of thing, has that been done before, has it been denied before?
Yes, we had a gentleman. Who is seeking to build a full barn or secondary. It was large though, but they were looking at building that, and they were in the A R district. And wanted ten feet instead of. And it was deemed that it was a self-created. And he could have simply, he could have just moved it and, you know, he had a safety system. That, uh, didn't allow him to move it too much over, he had another shed that he had. Uh, ordinances, I mean, there was some similarities. He has decided the property to be able to do it, it says point five three acres, great. The home isn't over stragg, and they're asking for a rest of thirteen hundred and ninety six square foot house. I mean, other discussion?
No, you, in example, uh, the pole barn is different from, from. Somebody told.
Another concern, at what point, we have a home that's been there since maybe in the sixties? Excuse me, eighteen seventies. Sixteen, wow, I was in there, that's a old, old one, eighteen, that would be for you, but nineteen seventy four. At what point do you quit investing on a property? Of a trailer. Before you might wanna just say, uh. Enough's enough, and what are you gonna do with the property, just leave it a vacant, because we can't build anymore there, or we want another trailer and. I mean, that would be.
Trailer is fifteen years old.
Yeah, but you could bring in anyone, I guess, but, but, I mean, I think, does that do? Justice for the individual that has a non-conforming property that is considered in nineteen oh four? Are we ready to vote? I think we're good with discussion. All right, moving on to votes, Kazansky, yes, Hager.
Yes.
Opperman, yes. I, more, most. Uh, Bernard, no. Motion carries. Congratulations, you've received your. Alright, so, um, can we get a motion to close the public hearing and return to the public meeting? Make a motion to do the public hearing and returns to. Yes, of course, special meeting, special, yes, uh, I'll second that, all in favor? Do we need a roll call for that?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay. Meeting resumed and. Moving on to Z B A member comments, including any training updates. Uh, Kazansky.
I have no comments, we did go to, oh, I can't say that, I do have comments, we went to the, we went to Franklin move. And had a great time, we learned and.
On May seventh, four hours of training for the PD, there we go, make sure we got our record done on that, thank you. Um, then Bernard, um. For the training, it was Kazansky, Bernard, Opperman, Hager, Close. Does that conclude the? But she doesn't go under her, she is not her high law. Okay, so please have the record reflected, that way they've met their PD requirement for the year.
All the members and it was pretty good. I, I couldn't go to Franklin, I actually drove up to Caitlin.
Oh, wow.
You know, scheduling. But yeah, I thought it was pretty good.
Alright, can we get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I will make a motion.
Alright, all in favor?
Love the efficiency.
Beautiful, thank you, Laura.